If I can call the meeting to order, if we can all rise for the Fudge of Allegiance. I have the Fudge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation and under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And get a motion to accept tonight's agenda. All on paper?
Aye.
Dr. Harrison, over to you.
Alrighty. Just bear with me a second. Give me a second. Here we go. So, good evening, everyone, and I have to say it is with a great deal of enthusiasm that I find myself before the Board of Education in our community tonight and thinking about what is going to be an incredible experience for all of our students here in Irvington. You know, I don't think it's an accident that we're literally looking one year to the calendar day from when we first closed schools. The first day that schools were closed in Irvington was March 16th. So, here we go now and looking at this pivot. It's been too long in coming, but the time is due. And the reason why we know we can do this, the reason why we know we can do it well, is because we've done well planned. We are teachers, our custodians, our principals, everyone has done an amazing job to this point. You know, when we set out in this process, looking to expand daily student attendance, I established three principles or three tenants by which we were going to guide our decision-making. The first was vaccination of our staff. I'm proud to say that nearly every single staff member in our district has received both doses of the vaccine or has received their only dose of J&amp;J. We currently have a testing surveillance plan that we're ready to launch, send details to the community this week. We are in great shape and ready to kick off surveillance testing. And we understand all of the details associated with the New York State guidelines that govern how we're going to manage things in our schools. And when we step back and think not only about what DOH says, while DOH is the governing agency for the state of New York, it was awfully reassuring to hear Dr. Fauci the other day say that we should be moving to three feet of social distancing in schools. It shows that how we've interpreted and how we understand the New York State Department of Health guidelines, how Westchester County Department of Health has supported us in this process is aligned now with the thinking across the country. So, we're in a position where we are prepared for full in-person student attendance, five days a week, but we're going to do so in a phased-in approach. We're still going to offer our 100% distance learning option and we are going to comply with all of these guidelines. So, when we think about this, as you know, we put out a survey to the community seeking feedback as to where parents were, where parents were thinking about their comfort level and the type of learning experience they wanted for their children. So, we know today we have 1,723 students in the Irvington schools. And the slide you see before you is a snapshot from earlier today. And it is quite impressive to think that 96% of the students who are represented through the survey, that their parents and guardians have identified they want their children in school, five days a week. And looking at 56 students at this point in time, whose parents would prefer in-person learning, and certainly not looking to cast judgment, I understand there's lots of critical situations before families and they're making decisions that are in best interest of themselves, and we fully respect that. But when we look at this, this sends a strong message, not only a message about what our community wants for its children, but a message in the confidence and trust that they have in the work that we've done here in the Irvington schools. When we think about distance learning, you can see the numbers are kind of spread out across the board. When we think about those students, those 56 students, you can see how they're relatively evenly distributed across all grade levels, with a little bit of a larger interest, 7th and 8th grade, 11th grade, but beyond that, the vast majority of our students and their parents want them to be in school. So, when we think about what we're doing, well, there are some changes. There are some adjustments that we have to make. We're looking at social distancing that's going to be enforced at a minimum of three feet in classrooms. And I want to underscore minimum because there's a number of classrooms where the spacing is going to be greater than that. And it's going to be closer to that six feet that we've seen in other places, but we have to be realistic. There's places where we're going to be close to three feet. And when we think of our dining areas, we're going to look at six feet of distancing, similar to what we have here today. We're going to have desk barriers installed in all classrooms. We've ordered, Carol has ordered over 2,200 barriers that are set to be delivered to the district tomorrow. Our amazing custodial maintenance staff has constructed dozens and dozens of other barriers that we're using where we have tables rather than desks. So, you can picture big plastic barriers that are separating our students and still providing the distancing between them. Mask wearing is still going to be required at all times, except when one is eating. Mask breaks are only going to be offered when it's necessary, and we're going to facilitate them outdoors. We're going to continue to monitor all hallway traffic patterns and we're going to make adjustments where necessary. We're going to stagger flow in hallways. We're going to have staff supervising to ensure that students aren't congregating and that there is appropriate social distancing. Our stairwells, like they were when we opened schools in September, one stairway is up, one stairway is down, so we're not having congestion in our stairwells, and our students aren't coming face-to-face in the stairwells. We're no longer going to facilitate snacks in elementary classrooms. The reason being for that is when we think about that idea of taking a mask off, and if we have a mask off in a classroom and we have a positive case of COVID-19 in that classroom, we're going to have to quarantine everybody in that room. But if we're able to take our children outside for snack breaks or to much larger areas for snack breaks, that concern is greatly diminished because when we think about that situation in the cafeteria where our students are spaced six feet apart, the guidance from Department of Health is just the students in the perimeter of the positive individual. But when, once we're in a classroom, that smaller, more confined space, despite the fact there's barriers, despite the fact that there's windows open and doors open for proper circulation, we still will have to quarantine folks if we're in the classroom. So, rather than risk that, we're going to eliminate snack periods in classrooms, but not take away that opportunity for students to have that nourishment midday to be able to maintain their focus. We have ordered over 20 20-by-20 tents that we are installing on all of our school campuses. So, we're taking different approaches here in how we're going to utilize them. Some is going to be utilized to expand dining areas, and then in other cases, it is going to offer outdoor learning spaces. When we think about contact tracing, quarantining, and isolations, they're going to be enforced with our consistent practices, following all Department of Health guidelines. We're not going to see that change. There may be revisions down the road that come forth from New York State Department of Health, but at this point in time, we're going to be looking at the same practices. We're looking at individuals that have been within six feet for an extended period of time of a positive case. Those are the individuals that would be quarantined. We're going to implement our surveillance testing on a semi-monthly or twice-a-month basis, and here parental consent is going to be needed. And we are seeking to modify our arrival and dismissal procedures based upon local needs at each school. So, it's a little different from building to building. With us planning to open Dow's Lane for full student attendance next week, there's been numerous meetings that have been facilitated over the last week and a half. Ms. Stein has really partnered well with not only the school leadership, but with the Irvington Police Department in looking to make adjustments to those plans. And when we think about Dow's Lane, and we know it's tight quarters in there, we're going to have staggered arrival times. So, buses are going to come before parents that are transporting students in their own vehicles. We have tiers of plans that we will utilize to be able to spread out traffic, and if need be, we will be able to release some traffic through the back gate at Willow and Oak, only if it is needed. So, when we think about where we are today, we're in a plan where we have multiple stages of adjustments that we'll make. We're going to be flexible in our approach. We're going to have Irvington Police on-site monitoring traffic coming down Dow's Lane, and then another officer on the school campus itself, helping monitor and direct traffic. When we think about these general overviews that I'm providing this evening, understand that each school is going to hold a meeting that will be announced following tonight. And in that meeting that's going to be announced, and that meeting will occur before the respective schools return to full attendance date, that they're going to review, the school administration is going to review all local protocols, and then they're going to come out in writing. So, you have them to really memorialize what is happening in the schools. So, cafeterias and lunchtime has been an area where there has really been a challenge in looking at how we're going to plan this and how we're going to do it safely. So, with the elementary schools, we had been in a place where we're asking parents to preorder lunch. That's not going to happen any longer. Students will be able to go through the lunch line in the cafeteria while being properly supervised and order a meal, should they choose, or bring their own from home. We're going to continue to provide six feet, a minimum of six feet of social distancing, using desks and chairs. We're not using traditional cafeteria tables in our cafeterias to ensure that we can provide that level of distancing. When we think about à la carte snack offerings in our elementary schools, we are going to phase that in once we settle into our routines. So, those students that are eager to get a snack at school, that opportunity might be there, but we need to make sure that we're operating our cafeterias efficiently, that we're serving all of our students in a timely manner, and that everybody's able to remain safe and properly distanced. When we arrive in that place, and if we have the necessary food service staff, we're going to make that expansion there as well. So, another example of how we're phasing in this increased experience for our students. So, at Dow's Lane, students are going to dine in either the cafeteria or the gymnasium. If you were to tour Dow's Lane today, you would see both spaces with student desks, all separated with chairs, ready to go to welcome our students. At Main Street School, students are going to dine in either the cafeteria, auditorium, and soon as the weather gets nice in a couple of weeks, we're going to have the opportunity for students to go outdoors and sit under tents to be able to eat. Then up here at the campus, we are going to dine, students will be able to dine in either the cafeteria or the quad under tents, and then other alternate spaces that are being identified in the respective buildings. When we think about the quad area out here at the campus, it's almost going to look like a massive tent out there where we're going to join many tents together to almost have a large outdoor covered eating space. We are going to have chairs outside for students to be able to sit, and then in the cafeteria, we are going to have those mini desks that many of us probably remember back from when we were in high school or college with the little desktops that flip up. And I want to thank Mercy College because Mercy College rose to the occasion and donated nearly 100 of those desk-chair combos for our use in our schools. So, to President Hall and his entire facility staff, we owe them a debt of gratitude because they certainly stepped up, offset possible expenditures for the school district for several thousand dollars. So, when we think about surveillance testing, some of the details are consistent with what I've shared before. We are going to use the Binax Now Rapid Antigen Test that have been acquired through the Westchester County Department of Health. We have those test kits in stock. They are all stacked in my office, ready to be utilized. Tests are going to be administered by contracted service providers that are medical professionals that are going to facilitate that testing. However, for students to participate in the testing, we are going to need to have consent from all parents. That information is going to go out later this week, and I'm going to ask that parents, please complete it in a timely manner so we can establish our plans. We're going to have a random sampling, meaning that once we receive all of our consent forms back, we are going to, literally in a spreadsheet, do a random sort and then cluster them by testing period, and you will be emailed a testing appointment as when you will come. When we think about how that's going to work, we're going to designate one or two locations in the district which are being finalized, either on a school campus or in village property, where you will be able to come on, we're looking at Monday mornings. The reason being Monday, making Monday important is because if we have a case that someone tests positive in their surveillance testing, we're able to turn that student around. That student can go home and isolate, seek their medical attention that they need, and their family can care for them, and we're not worrying about quarantining and other exposures in the school. So, our target at this point in time is Monday morning before school starts, and we will establish that appointment schedule, and every parent will receive that notification well in advance to be able to plan accordingly. I anticipate, because of the enrollment we have, looking at the cycles that we will see of testing that will happen every two weeks, that probably every child will be tested once. So, when we think about inconveniences associated with it, an inconvenience that's helping provide for the safety and the health of our school community, it's probably going to be one instance where a parent for their child would have to drive their child to the testing location on a Monday morning to be tested before school. In all of those cases, families will be notified. If a child tests positive, you'll receive documentation on-site with directions to follow up with your medical care provider. And those that have a negative result will be able to attend school that day as it was a normal day. All of the test results, positive test results are reported to the Westchester County Department of Health for contact tracing purposes, as we do with all the cases that we learn of on a regular basis. So, when we look at the methodology here, and this is one that was developed in-house that was supported by Dr. Huff, our medical director, and reviewed by the Westchester County Department of Health and approved by them, that we're looking at testing 5% of students and interested staff members who are physically present on school grounds every two weeks. So, in turn, we're going to be looking at approximately 10% of our onsite population being tested on a monthly basis. When we think about how we're going to evaluate this data, we are going to look at the results from that moment in time, and we're going to compare them with the prevalence rates, either the data from Irvington or Westchester County. The reason why I put both out there is the local data is harder to get on an on-demand basis. So, when we look at that, we want to be, we're going to pick the data that's most accurate and up-to-date, and then we're going to compare the Irvington results. And if we say, for example, and you can see the illustration here, that we're always going to follow the one that is the higher of the two, our objective is to remain consistent with the prevalence or the positivity rates in the surrounding community. The expectation is that those numbers are going to be lower in the schools because of all the safety measures that we're employing. However, if there is a time when we exceed that percentage by 1%, so the example that I provide, that if, say, Village of Irvington is 5% and we are 6% or higher in our schools, that means we are going to hit the pause button. We're going to review that data with our medical director. We're going to review that data with the Department of Health, and we're going to determine what mitigation efforts we're going to have to employ. So, depending on whether there's a cluster, for example, what we'll do in those cases is if it's a cluster, we may take one school. We could consider backing off and going back to our hybrid plan that's already in place. We could close a school for a period of time. Maybe it's a nice, one grade level at a time or one class at a time. We're going to let that data and the medical experts inform the recommendation that we're going to employ based upon those results. And as with every other case, all positive cases are going to be dealt with in the same manner we have. We're going to be supportive of students, staff members, that we're going to support those folks in ensuring that they understand what has to occur, their isolation, the quarantine for any of their close contacts, especially those and their families, and we'll report all of those cases, of course, to the Westchester County Department of Health. So, when we think about this phased-in approach, we're doing this in tiers, just like when I talked about cafeteria, right? Doing this in steps to make sure we're ready. We're doing this in stages as we move through the next few weeks. We're looking at secondary students. It's our students in the middle school and high school who have IEPs and are enrolled in ICT. Co-talk classes are going to begin four-day-a-week attendance. We are going to phase out remote attendance on Flex Wednesdays. We're going to phase out asynchronous learning on Flex Wednesdays, and we're going to phase in full daily student attendance by school campus. So, this graphic is almost identical to that which I communicated with the community on Thursday, but it provides that overview. So, where you see a check mark, it means these items are already taken care of. So, when we look to Dow's Lane, we're looking to restore full student attendance on March 22nd, that is this coming Monday. Our ICT students, students with IEPs and ICT classes have already been in four days a week. We're going to phase out Flex Wednesdays on that day, that week. So, the 24th at Dow's Lane, there's no Flex Wednesday. At Main Street School, our students with IEPs and ICT classes are already back four days a week. On March 24th, Cohort B will be in for the morning session of that day for in-person learning. Cohort A will be learning remotely. And then on April 7th, the day when we get back from spring break, Main Street School is going to return to full student attendance. And then when we look at the campus, on March 22nd is here where we're phasing in the ICT attendance. We're looking at on March 24th, Cohort B to be in person for an AM session. On April 7th, which was another Flex Wednesday, Cohort A will be in attendance for the AM, and then on April 12th, the full campus will return for in-person learning, five days a week. You'll note that there's those asterisks in my notes in red. We know we need the barriers to be able to make this happen. We have been informed that the barriers will be arriving tomorrow. So, so as long as that truck makes it here from a warehouse in New Jersey, they've shipped to a distribution in New Jersey, distribution center in New Jersey. My first meetings this morning, I turned to Carol and I asked, I said, "So, you're going to reach out to make sure things are on the way?" She's like, "I already called them." They confirmed that they're in the warehouse in New Jersey, and they're being loaded on a truck today for delivery to Irvington. So, they should be here. I don't foresee there being any problems. And then, of course, we're going to continue to offer the distance learning option for families that choose, but again, it's going to be in a revised capacity. And here, I'm going to want us to make sure that we understand what the purpose of the distance learning option is for. We're looking for families that believe that it is the right choice for their child, for health reasons or otherwise, with no judgment attached to it, to make that determination. But to do so, we're looking for that commitment for the balance of the school year, which is literally coming down to the final quarter of the year. When we think about where we are, we understand that there's going to have to be some changes to how distance learning looks, how it functions, and the level of engagement or the types of engagement that are going to exist. We're not going to be able to provide distance learning as a tool of convenience for families. If by chance, there's a situation where I've made a doctor's appointment for my child one afternoon, your child needs to come to school in the morning, and then you need to pick up your child early to take them to the medical appointment, we're not going to be able to accommodate those individual one-off requests. If for some reason, there's a dramatic change in your life situation and you want your child to return to in-person learning, if you want your child to shift to remote, those requests must come to me, and I'm going to be the individual that's going to review them, to ensure that we have consistency across the district and to make sure that the same standards are being applied. So, with that said, when we think about what this experience may look like, I am going to ask Mary to join us to give an overview of what the elementary distance learning option is going to look like, and then the secondary. So, Mary?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Oh, I'm hearing echo. Is that okay?
You're good on our end.
Okay, great. So, our elementary students are going to experience what we're calling a one-room schoolhouse approach. And if we think about what a one-room schoolhouse is, it means that students in different grade levels are housed together, and the teacher is dividing their attention between different grade levels so they meet the needs of all those students. So, in our case, teachers will be assigned to, we will have teachers who are specifically assigned to this one-room schoolhouse approach. Half of the students, meaning one grade level, will be receiving synchronous and one-half asynchronous. It'll be split morning and afternoon. We will have three certified long-term substitutes providing this instruction for our students. They are long-term substitutes who have been in our district. They're familiar with the buildings that they're in. They're familiar with the students. They're familiar with our routines and our procedures. So, each long-term substitute is responsible for two grades. We have one assigned to kindergarten and first, one assigned to second and third, one assigned to fourth and fifth. And what that will mean is that, let's say, the kindergarten first-grade teacher will work with kindergarten in half the day live, and then the other half of the day would be asynchronous learning for those kindergarten students. That does not necessarily mean that kindergarten students are glued to a screen. It means that they will be working independently at that time, and the instruction may be a combination of computer-based instruction, it may be assignments, it may be reading, writing. For all of our students, their youngest learners, we're really looking to decrease the amount of time that they're on screens. Then the teacher would flip and spend the other half of the day with the first-grade students, and so that way, each group gets a half a day with the teacher and a half a day of asynchronous work. Our grade levels work as very, very tight teams in our elementary schools, and they will continue to do so. The grade-level teachers, as well as our instructional coaches, and of course, our building leaders, will be working with the long-term substitutes to ensure that we've got strong alignment between the experience that our distance learning students have and the experience that our onsite students have. We do want to be transparent about the cost of providing this. So, our long-term substitutes working for the remainder of the year in this model would be paid $7,625, which means a total of a little more than $22,000 for us to be able to offer this option at the elementary level. And at the secondary level, we have students who are definitely able to be more independent in their learning and able to handle the demands of the technology involved with distance learning more independently. So, what it will look like for them will be somewhat like it has been earlier this year. However, it will be a more passive experience for students who are remote at the secondary level. Our teachers will be having classrooms full of students rather than half of their class onsite and half off, and the degree to which they're going to provide that individualized attention to our remote students is going to be impacted by that. We want parents to know that. We will be continuing to use Google Classroom to communicate with students, to post assignments, and to provide a wide and to provide a wide variety of learning resources for both onsite and remote students. Teachers will, of course, continue to provide feedback to students who are remote. We know that that is absolutely critical to their learning and it's been a big focus, uh, for the Irvington School District this year. They will be interacting with remote students during class. But again, I'm going to say it's going to be much less than it may currently look like. Of course, our teachers are available for extra help sessions and will be available to make appointments to meet with students who want to meet with them individually. Students will also be receiving feedback asynchronously, assignments being handed back. And our teachers, I hope many of you have had the opportunity to see this, are using a wonderful tool called Moat where they are actually able to provide themselves recorded feedback right on the assignments for students. So we feel that our secondary students this way will receive quality education. We know that it's going to be more passive than if they were onsite, less direct interaction with the teachers. We're going to do everything that we can to make sure that those students receive the best instruction we can provide.
Thank you, Mary. So when you sit there and hear this, we know 96-plus percent of, uh, parents or students' parents are saying, this sounds interesting, but it's not going to apply to my child. But you should listen and be mindful to what Mary just explained at both the elementary and secondary level. Because if by chance your child is quarantined, your child is going to participate in this mode of learning. So when we think about that, that if you're, and we think about those numbers, right? Go back to think about kindergarten and first grade. We're looking at very, very small class sizes. And we think about it like that dream experience in some ways, kind of a certified teacher working with my kid- ki- kindergartner and only one other classmate right now for half of the day. One-on-two instruction. It sounds great. And the second part of that day, it's not going to be computer screen time. There's going to be some asynchronous art experience, some asynchronous music experience, some independent reading activities that they're going to engage in. But at times, if we have a first or second grader or kindergarten or first grader that need to quarantine, that they're going to join that group for that period of time and learn remotely. And similarly, at the secondary level, as students have to quarantine, we're going to have to make that shift back and forth, which is going to require lots of communication within the school and to ensure that our teachers, especially in the secondary level, are ready to flip that camera back on to livestream for the periods that they're going to have students that are going to be learning remotely. So when we think about this, I want to reiterate those comments that I made before, that we're looking for a commitment for the balance of this year. Students are not going to be able to switch back and forth between different modes of learning. Any hardships are going to be reviewed and evaluated by me only to ensure consistency in our practice and ensure equity for all of our kids. Students who are required to isolate or quarantine will be appropriately accommodated. We're going to make sure, we're going to support you every way we possibly can. And as I said, we're going to engage you in these distance learning experiences. When we think about remote learning, this is not intended to support vacations or other family appointments. So if there's times where your child would have been absent, we're going to say that a child is going to be absent. We're back to a regular school experience. This isn't to be a tool for convenience. Remote student attendance is going to be required and it is going to be monitored. So there is accountability. We need to make sure our students are there, that they're attending to their learning, make sure they're well. We want to make sure that we're able to assess their learning and their progress. And like our current experiences, students have to have their cameras turned on at all times. So when we think about where we are, parents, we need your partnership. Now more than ever, your partnership, that connection between home and school is absolutely critical. So when we think about where we are now, there's a survey that I asked to be due yesterday and I understand people's lives are busy. I've sent out two reminders, schools have sent out reminders as well. We still have about 200, 250 families that have yet to complete that survey. So we need to make sure that you do so. And the schools are going to begin reaching out to those families tomorrow that have not done so to ensure that we have the, a proper commitment for them for when the schools transition to full in-person attendance. If you're open to your child participating in the surveillance testing program, I ask that you please complete that consent form and return it on a, in a timely basis. Again, that communication will be hitting your inbox within the next two days. I need you to be transparent. If you have a COVID-19 exposure, you have a COVID-19 case in your house, you have to let us know. If you have travel plans, of course, we want you here. If you're going away, of course, I'm going to be jealous. But at the end of the day, just simply be open and tell us that you're traveling. We have to follow all published guidelines regarding quarantining. So whether that is if you're a direct contact, whether you're someone is positive and you need to isolate, or when you travel, and I'm going to say this very slowly and deliberately, when you travel, unless you or the individual is fully vaccinated, two weeks post the last dose of the vaccine, within 90 days of that window of time, you have to quarantine. I know a week ago, the governor spoke of April 1st, we're going to lift all travel quarantine requirements. The governor said that, but that has not been translated into Department of Health guidance. And Department of Health is speaking to us very transparently. And they are telling us that right now, there is no movement on that front from the Department of Health. It's the governor's voice saying April 1st. I know a lot of us would love to see that happen. That conveniently aligns with spring break, right? We could get out of town, long weekend, we could go see grandma, we can go to the beach, whatever the case may be. But I have to be very clear that what the governor stated is not reflected in New York State Department of Health guidelines. Meaning that if you travel, it, and the Department of Health has not revised its guidance to reflect that which the governor stated last week, the same quarantining requirements will be in place. The governor put us in a really difficult spot. He put Department of Health in a difficult spot and there's lots of confusion out there. But understand that is our reality, that we have to wait for Department of Health guidelines to be published. And I can tell you, as late as this afternoon, our representatives at Westchester Department of Health are unsure as to what is going to happen. They're not getting any guidance and they question whether or not the state will be able to make, meet that April 1st timeline to make any adjustments. So we also need to make sure that our students attend school on time daily. As I said, we're going to have staggered arrival times at some of the schools. Please comply with those requests from school leadership because we need to make sure that we don't have traffic jams. We need to make sure that we can be efficient in the arrival and departure of our students. We're going to have to prioritize bus transportation. The reason for that is that our buses all run on a system. If they're late at one school, they're going to be late at another school. So we have to prioritize buses. So please make sure you follow the published arrival and dismissal times for your respective school. And by no accident, this next item is listed in red, bolded and underlined. I need you to complete that daily health screener. We need to have that completed on a daily basis. And I want to say that this is not an Irvington policy. This is a state requirement that we have health screeners where you attest to the health of your child. Parents, this is your responsibility to make sure that it's done. We're going to send out reminders from the school and like in the beginning of the year, I'm going to send those alert messages that you'll get via email and text message early in the morning as a reminder. But we need you to do this because I got to tell you, if we have 100 students in a school that don't have this done on a daily basis, it's going to shut the school down. We're going to have to take time, go pull every one of those children as they get off the buses from their classrooms. We're going to have to put them in an isolation space and we're going to have to contact you to come, complete the form for your child. If we have that extent happen for an extended period of time, we're not going to be able to maintain this full attendance model. So please, please help us out here. I need you to be my partner. I need you to be the partner with every teacher, staff member, principal in this district. Please complete this form on a daily basis. Whether you do it through the web portal, whether you do it through the app, make sure it's done for your child. And I'm going to ask that it's done by 7:30 AM to give us that lead time to be able to follow up and start investigating who has not completed yet. And please just communicate. There's no penalty for honesty here. We need to keep our school safe. And if we don't have this partnership, our ability to maintain increased daily student attendance is going to be at risk from day one. So please, let's do this for each of our kids, do it for your individual children. Let's do it for all of the children here in Irvington. With that said, I'm certainly open to any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, for all of your work and the work of all the staff in getting us to where our venue to your recognition. So thank you to the, you know, been a part of this and getting us here. So I'm sure the trustees have questions. So I'll leave mine towards the end and maybe you want to start.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Thank you. Uh, I will, you know, I, uh, I think someone told me I say thank you too much. Uh, but, uh, I can't, but I quite frankly, I can't say it enough. Um, so thank you again. I echo Brian for all the hard work that you guys have done. Um, I have one question. Uh, it's a, I guess it's more than one. Can you go back to the slide with the nu- with the numbers of the, uh, the folks in each grade that are opting to be remote, but based on the survey at least at that, at this particular time? I just, I'm trying to, I, I just want to like, like visually understand.
Ooh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I believe this is what you're looking for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you've got an elementary school K through five, six, eight, 11, 15, 17. So less than basically one class size, folks. How, how many people, how many, um, what do we, what do we call in the folks that are delivering the instruction?
Uh, it's a long-term substitute.
Long-term substitute.
But they are, I want to clarify, they're all elementary certified teachers.
All elementary commerce certified folks. Uh, so the, uh, how many of them are there to cover the 17 children across the multiple grades? Like, like, how are you bridge classing or like, what, how are you setting up the, the instruction for those particular kids?
Mary, do you want to speak to the instructional plans, please?
Sure. Uh, so Dave, there's one person assigned to kindergarten and first grade, one person assigned to second and third, and one person assigned to fourth and fifth.
Okay, so then if anybody needs to quarantine from fourth, fifth, second, third, K-1, they'll slide into that for the duration of their particular quarantine?
Exactly. They'll join their grade level group regardless of their, uh, class assignment.
Okay, and as certified, uh, sub- long-term substitute teach, highly qualified teachers or substitute teachers, um, they'll be responsible for the grading of the work and the feedback of the work. I, I just want to, like, I, I really want to assure folks who are going to be, uh, relying on remote instruction for the remainder of the year to ensure that while we are, like, we know the word, uh, you know, uh, a little bit different, a different version of instruction. Um, I just want to make sure that there's some fidelity there for parents so that they understand the feedback and the grading and, um, who's actually creating the learning experience and the lesson plans that they're delivering, you know, what type of curriculum, those kinds of things.
So Dave, our, our elementary grade levels work very, very closely to develop curriculum together, to develop their lesson plans and their instruction materials together. So these teachers who are working with our remote students will be part of that planning process and will be using the same instructional materials that are being used for the onsite students.
And then, um, when the, um, whatever portion of the day where the students are working independently, I suppose, or if they're working in rooms with each other, I'm sure they could set up different kinds of experiences and so forth. But who, who's, um, are they, how, what system is in place to monitor making sure that those folks are on task and doing what they should be doing and collecting that kind of work? Um, you know, again, just the purpose of these questions are just to ensure folks and parents out there that while more passive, et cetera, there's still a fidelity.
So when we look at this scenario, we literally have to come back and look at the numbers on the screen. We have one teacher that is going to be supporting those students. So just because we have a part of the day that is going to be independent, let's say, does not preclude that teacher from being able to have opportunities to check in with students. Just so they're going to, we're going to guarantee students about a half a day of direct instruction time, but there needs to be some other check-ins. We need to make sure that we're supporting and caring for those, those learners. The reason why we're implementing this kind of model at the elementary school and not at the secondary school, it's multifaceted. One, there's a certification component that you, to be able to teach the courses at elementary school, it's a generalist certificate, right? And at the secondary schools, you have to have content area expertise. And the nuances of the schedule, it would be impossible to manage it this way and to be able to staff it in such a way. Uh, but we also have to think about the developmental level of our students, especially our primary age learners. That, you know, when we think about our kindergartners that are learning to read right now and for them to be able to work very independently as our high school students are, it's just not going to happen. They, they may be able to be a whiz on the computer, right? They may be able to flip around, do everything they need to on their Chromebook. But they have to be able to read, interpret and understand directions. They need someone that's going to teach them directly a skill to engage them in discussion, to coach them in their writing. And that's going to happen in this small group instruction. And when I think about this, not only for these students that are ident- the numbers that are identified in the screen, and I'm sure this number is going to tick up a few, right? Because as I said, we have about 200, 250 surveys that we're waiting on. So these numbers inevitably are going to increase. But we also have to be mindful that our students that are in isolation or quarantining are going to filter through this experience. So that reinforces what Mary said before, that there needs to be continuity of instruction for what's happening in the classroom. So the students that are participating remotely have to have experiences that mirror that is what is happening onsite in classrooms. Because one day, David Graber in his third grade class, he may be there and all of a sudden he has to quarantine because of whatever reason. When David pops into the distance learning experience the next day, he needs a teacher that's equipped. And there might be a day off, a period off, however it works, to be able to pick David up right where he left off, understand the curriculum, understand those assignments that he's working on and just keep his learning moving forward to ensure that we have that level of continuity. It's going to take a little bit of time for us to get going here. Um, but we're going to hit the groove. We have some great teachers that are moving into these roles that the principals are really excited about. Um, and so I, I'm really confident that this is going to be a good experience for our kids. And we've used that word passive. And I'm going to be honest, early on, we used it kind of deliberately, right? We get to try and manage expectations, but there's not much that's passive about this, right? This is engagement. This is like an incredible amount of almost one-on-one instruction for kids. And at the secondary level, there's going to be less engagement because we look at a teacher that's going to have, be tending to 20 kids in a classroom and was not going to be able to be tethered to their computer. But there's no question, our teachers are going to check in with the kids at home. They're going to give them feedback, they're going to engage them, they're going to ask questions. It's going to happen. But it's not going to be the same on demand where the teacher's going to be sitting right here, looking out at the class and then having, being on, on camera for, for all, for everybody. But we're going to support those kids, no doubt. It's our responsibility.
Awesome. That's it, that's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And just a reminder to everyone that, uh, any questions posted in the Q and A will not be read or answered. There is a period for community comment after the trustees' questions and that was the opportunity for the community to ask questions or make comments. So just a reminder that, uh, the Q and A feature in Zoom, uh, is not the place for that, but you will have an opportunity shortly to, uh, make your comments or ask questions. Beth?
Okay, hi. Um, I wanted to-
That talks about reasons people might switch into remote learning. Let me just make sure the slide is up. Okay, so in light of what we talked about with vacation, the way this is set up at this point, after spring break, people who have traveled, that would be considered to be a quarantine and those children of those families, assuming they all travel together, would be able to take advantage of remote student attendance and would not be considered to be not available due to vacation.
If we're making a choice, if someone is quarantining, they're quarantining because of a contact. Right now, I'm not of the mind that we should be supporting, using this as a tool of convenience for families so we can travel. It really provides some differences here in thinking about the need to provide equitable experiences for all of our kids. And so when we think of those that are fortunate enough to be able to have the opportunity to take a vacation and those that don't, it's like we're further accommodating that. And it really rubs me the wrong way a little bit in thinking about how that plays out in classrooms for our students. So I have pause with that, Beth, I got to be honest.
You know, I was asking because I actually had misunderstood the governor's guidance. I also thought, yeah, yeah.
So you know what? Governor's guidance comes through April 1st, we don't have to worry about that, right? You could get off a plane today, go to school tomorrow if the governor's guidance comes through. But it's a waiting game. We don't know if it will happen and if it does, when it will be implemented.
The other question I had from this slide is sometimes a child, a student, may be ill but not be quarantining and would have, let's say, a doctor's note, they don't have COVID, they would be eligible for remote learning.
You said they would be?
I'm asking.
No, they would not. If you're going to be absent, you're going to be able to connect with your class via Google Classroom. We're not able to provide that level of continuity and period by period being able to do that. We wouldn't be able to manage that as a system in the same way because we're not going to be live streaming all the time. So if you're going to be out sick and you can't attend school and it's not related to quarantine, you need to care for yourself, make up your work as you normally would and rejoin your classmates when you're well enough to be back in school. The logistics of someone popping in and out of these experiences for a day or two days when it is not a quarantine situation or a long-term arrangement such as that which a parent is committing to now, or someone that has appealed to me that I've approved, we cannot support that level back and forth. The management, I got to be honest, is really going to be overwhelming that we can't do that on a day-to-day basis. And to be able to alert teachers, teachers adjust plans, move things around, it just simply can't happen. It's just, it would be overwhelming.
Right. And it's similar to what happens.
Regular schooling.
Right. When you have a cold, you can miss a couple of days of school because you have a cold. Okay, and then not related to this particular slide, and this also is something that was recently in the news, and I don't know if there's an answer at this point, perhaps from you or Mary, but we know they're talking about four regions possibly being given, and that's living environment, which I guess I call biology. That's right, right? Earth science, algebra, and English. So if I may just for this question, pull out English because that's usually for 11th and 12th graders. The three other impact.
10th grade in Irvington.
Oh, it's a 10th grade.
We moved it up to 10th grade in Irvington three or four years ago.
Oh, well, thank you for educating me.
And that was deliberately done. Our students take English reasons earlier because we wanted to expose them to other enriching courses that they could take in their junior and senior years. So it'd be 10th grade in Irvington.
Sorry that I missed, that's good to know. Thank you for sharing that. But with those fours, any thought being, thought to, you know, we've talked about the older secondary students have the ability to, if they're remote, to follow as they have with the remote learning. Is there any thought about additional support surrounding Regents review at all? I don't know if that's something that the school ordinarily provides.
So I would say similar fashion to how we've had experiences in, when we think of AP test season, Regent test season, teachers provide opportunities to support kids leading up to it, whether it was, you know, they would have evening cram parties and review processes. Our teachers are going to prepare our students for the test. As Mary has indicated before, the focus has really been on power standards, right? Identifying those key learning objectives that students need to know to achieve the objectives that are set forth in the curriculum within the learning standards, which of course then are measured on either the Regents exam or an AP exam. So those communications, those supports are going to be coming out from the high school. And I'm sure, you know, we are where we are today. Granted, I've done lots of work, Carol's done lots of work, Mary's done a lot. We're here today because of what our teachers have done. And our teachers are going to continue to jump in. They're exhausted, but they're energized by the kids coming back and they want to resume that level enormity and they want to see their kids do well on these assessments as a reflection of the skills and knowledge that they've developed through their careers.
Thank you. Very exciting. Thanks for everything. Thank you.
Michael?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Ellis and Dr. Harrison, and thank you to everyone for the massive amount of work that's had to occur. And I was just sort of imagining having that Santa Claus tracker where, but instead you keep updating us on where the barriers are as they come along. Some occasional Facebook updates will keep us all excited about the progress. Forgive me if some of this is reiterating parts of what you said, but with the change to in school, currently the exposure that qualifies for quarantining, it would still be six feet. So there's expectation that we could well see more people being quarantined. And just, I guess, did you mention in terms of people who are vaccinated, do they have to quarantine or not?
No, so it's a tricky process. So if you read the guidance and guidelines that were updated just last week, individuals that are fully vaccinated, so you're two weeks out from your last dose or you're single deposed if you had J and J, and for the 90 days that follow that, if you have direct contact with someone that is COVID positive, the guidelines say that you do not have to quarantine. Similar applies for someone that had COVID-19. There's that same, similar window of time where you wouldn't have to quarantine. But what has to happen? And Department of Health is kind of working their way through this. It shows how their, you know, the guidance is published and the system slowly evolved to support them. So we still have to go through our contact tracing protocols and we've had instances of this over the last week where we've had folks that were exposed to somebody that would, and the individuals are fully vaccinated. But what we had to do is we have to provide those individuals' names to Department of Health as close contacts, and then the Department of Health has to go through, verify their vaccination status, and then they release them from quarantine. So that is the case, but there's process and depending how overwhelmed Department of Health is, it could be difficult. And I got to say, you know, I've seen and heard Mary speaking of Dr. Huff saying that Catherine worked her magic again because she gets on the phone and advocates for us and gets Department of Health's wheels moving so we can get those folks off that quarantine list in those cases when we have the evidence, but they have to verify it within the state database that they are in fact fully vaccinated.
I'm starting to wonder if there's going to be a need for updated FAQ because I think that makes, I appreciate that explanation now, I understand, but there's going to be people who will come and wave their vaccination cards in your face.
Yeah, and so if there's, if there are questions, we see. We'll be glad, we'll be glad to develop. But I would say one thing that New York State, I don't know if you saw, is rolling out, they're looking at to come up almost like a one-pass type, a digital card that will verify a system that would be like an app on your phone, that it would be generated with like a QR code that would be your identity and that would have your vaccination information. So if that question is posed, that you would be able to verify it through a state portal on a smartphone, that, that's in the development phases right now.
Top-down versus dispersed. The, and that's because, along that same idea of understanding, I think you're on the wrong side of a communications battle here, which is that the governor has said one thing, and I've seen that and I've shared it and other people have shared it, that the travel rules have changed. That's, that's what people understand and have heard and it's one sentence and your ability to overcome that as a district is going to be very difficult. So it's not, it's, and on top of it, you're waiting for a potential change that could come at any moment, in which case you have to flip on a dime. So there's going to be, in addition to the folks later on who come with their vaccination cards, people now and after vacation who are going to say, but the governor said. And you're going to have a five-sentence paragraph trying to explain why that's not the case, that it's going to be difficult to digest for folks.
I'm going to put up a ticker in Times Square.
You're going to, I think it's going to need to be a repetition of the messaging. But along those lines, when I'm listening to you speak about the equity and the challenges with folks who for whatever reason aren't, and not for, I mean, there's some reasons that you've said are okay, they're quarantined, but all the other reasons in which you're saying they cannot participate in remote learning. The explanation you gave to Beth was helpful for me in understanding why it's so challenging for elementary students, that you won't necessarily be streaming in elementary classes and that there's this unique relationship that we'll still be having to adjust because of students, potentially even more students who are quarantined. But you want to limit the number of disruptions and not for 100 reasons, just for a few. For secondary, it seems as it's been described in emails and the survey is more passive. What are the challenges for secondary students in observing a live stream?
I don't know where we draw the line in understanding what's for convenience, what is for a reasonable quarantine. And so when we give clear parameters around what our practices are and what we'll accept, that either a parent makes a determination that their child's going to participate in 100% distance learning, or they have been identified as a close contact or a confirmed laboratory case of COVID-19 that would either require quarantine or isolation. That's something we can validate. Anything else from there, we can't manage. We're going to, we're, we can't be in a business where I'm going to be making teachers jump and modify their plans because someone is making a choice to one, go away, or saying they went away, but we feel like, you know what, we want to, we want to be able to have the convenience of doing it. We don't have the ability, the capacity to be able to evaluate each and every one of these situations. We have one nurse in each building. We have a couple administrators and they're the ones that are managing this on top of leading their respective buildings. I don't know how we do it in a way that doesn't throw out all the standards that we're looking to set forth and allow them to focus on returning to the high-quality learning experience that we want for our children each and every day. So I don't simply know how we manage it in a responsible way where we're going to be able to say, yeah, we treated this kid one way, we have to treat this kid the same way. We're going to need a whole manual of rules and regulations and about, we're going to spend all day trying to do that. So.
Well, I guess, I'm still, it's still a little unclear. I'm trying to think through the lens of parents and we know that as a parent, what's fair is what's being, if your child feels like your student is being treated fairly or not. And so to the degree that what's, that the policy that you're sharing with us tonight is the case for secondary as well, you're saying, I mean, so in terms of, can you say more specifically how it impacts the nurse, how it impacts the teacher when someone says, oh, you know, I'm back from vacation, I just want to, you know, watch for four days before I come back to school?
So you think about a student that it's not even like looking at a grade level as simply as in an elementary school where we can turn and say, oh, Ms. Gettle, you know, Michael's going to be quarantined for the next three days, he is going to then join the remote group. You're looking at then pulling up Michael's schedule and it's going to be five, six different teachers that are scattered all over the place. The schedule changes from day to day, right?
An elementary example.
I thought you said the second.
Secondary, you're saying secondary example.
So the student schedules are scattered all over the place. So we're looking at managing the health of the students in the building. We're looking at managing the health of the students and reporting all the details for the kids that are home, on top of managing all the data that's coming out of a surveillance testing program. And to think on any given day, you have 20, 30 different kids that are going to be in different scenarios that whether it's travel-related, to manage that is going to be a complete nightmare because it would become the nurse and the guidance counselors and the principals focusing on communicating to all these different teachers and you're, it just would not be something that could be managed in a responsible way where we could hold standards and expectations for who's going to be in school and who is not.
And does it also impact the teachers themselves in terms of their instruction to have?
100%. Teachers plan, right, of, on a daily basis. You know, teachers have unit plans from which they work and then they break those unit plans down into chunks, right? Individual class lessons and based upon the experience from the day before, teachers go home or at the end of the day are tweaking what they're going to do for the next day based upon those experiences in the classroom. And all of a sudden, you pull a couple students out and those students could have gone into grouping activities, right? And how you're managing your class the next day. And to think about how you're going to engage the kids, if all of a sudden you go from no kids being remote to all of a sudden having two kids being remote for reasons other than COVID-related direct contacts or being positive, it is going to lead a teacher to have to change their lesson plans, thus affecting everybody in the class.
Yeah. So I mean, I guess, again, I think you're up against the governor on this one and people made their travel plans and heard from the governor and now are going to be belatedly hearing that, oh, things haven't necessarily changed. So my sympathies in terms of the, I'm sure the board will get the emails as well.
And I'm sure you will. And folks, what the answer is here, please don't beat me up over this. What I'm asking for, email the governor's office, call the governor's office. He's the one that's got to get the Department of Health to move on this and he's got to negotiate with the Department of Health. I'm trying to run your schools in the safest way possible and focus on the best academic experience for every student. And without, if that is a legitimate movement that the state can make from a health policy perspective, well, then let's do it. Let's get the Department of Health to put it in writing and the governor's the person that can get that done. So if you want to help me work through this, please don't write me to complain about it. I understand, I want your kids in school. But at the end of the day, we need the governor and the Department of Health to change the practice. And if they're going to look at April 1st as that deadline where we're going to forget all travel-related testing protocols and quarantine, let's all, in Irvington tomorrow, everybody call the governor's office and tell them that we need that policy put in place.
The district operates based on the Department of Health guidance and not something someone says.
100%.
Okay. That is, but I think a lot of people got a different message the last few days. That covered a lot, I appreciate that. The, and did you mention, I might have missed it, that each school will be having a separate presentation.
Yes, each school, they've, I know they've already booked the dates, they have the Zoom appointments ready to go, they're waiting for the meeting tonight, and then they're going to be sending out the communications. Each of the meetings are going to proceed, the school's reopening, obviously. So for example, Dows Lane parents, get ready for Thursday night. So I know that there's going to be a Thursday afternoon session, a Thursday evening session. Ms. Chapnik has a date selected for next week. And then middle school and high school have a date picked and they're going to send their communications out as well.
I thank our building administrators for leading those efforts and I know parents really appreciate hearing from their building principals, so that's great. This final question, which is around, walking in here, I saw the boxes attend, so that's great, they arrived. And so with that, I just wanted to hear or rehear in terms of, we heard about how that can be used academically and for meals, but also in terms of clubs and end-of-school-year events and especially the culminating senior events, is the attitude in the administration in, at a building level that they're going to be able to do more and more activities? Because I certainly hear from, I hear from other places, other districts. Because I certainly hear from, I hear from other places, other districts, and certainly we're not other districts, that they still have these wacky ideas about how the end of year will be, that doesn't seem to be trending with everything else we're doing.
Yeah. So I fully expect that we're going to be able to do things, and if we work within the boundaries of the current guidelines, I think we could pull off some fun end-of-the-year moving-up experiences, graduation ceremonies. As I said in my weekly newsletter, like, I want to, and on Facebook last week, right? Like, these kids deserve to be celebrated, they've been resilient, they've had parts of their school experience in their lives pulled away from them, and we want to provide as much normalcy as we possibly can. Executive Latimer wrote a letter, which I spoke of at the last meeting, where he is advocating for Department of Health to release guidance for schools now on that subject. But we are already in planning processes for graduation, for example, at Irvington High School. And what I want to see, I want to see us down on the river. I want to see, and if Matheson is ready, you know what, I'm sorry, the rest of the community, you're not going to be able to come, but what I want to pull off is I want our students out there, properly distanced, with the bridge behind them, and their parents sitting out there in the audience, spread out across the field, watching their child get their diploma. That's what we want to do, I believe we can get there. We have the square footage on this beautiful waterfront, let's take advantage of it. So as long as the guidance is there, and I believe it's going to land there, the village is right there, they're our partners. Matheson's ready, they said we can have Matheson. If not, we have a Plan B that's being developed for Sina Hudson, and we'll be out at Sina Hudson. I really believe we can get there. And then we can translate that same kind of experience to eighth grade, right? We can translate that experience to moving-up experiences and do something outdoors at each school. So I believe we can get there, I really do.
That's great to hear, that's great to hear. And just a final thing, I heard a lot of people got their second shot yesterday, so I hope everybody's feeling good.
Yeah.
But I'm glad people are getting it, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to more, I just want to follow up on the conversation with Michael, because I think there's maybe a real simple piece that's getting lost at the secondary level. My understanding, based on the numbers, that there'll be probably numerous classes that don't have a live stream at all, once we move to this. So it'd be a, you know, change, then all of a sudden tell a teacher, oh, tomorrow Johnny's going to be remote, you have to start live streaming. So I think there's just a simple logistic issue that, looking at the numbers, my understanding would be there'd be numerous teachers that are going to no longer live stream at all.
Yeah, and I think you bring a great point, right? We've spent a lot of time talking about the transition to distance learning. Mary's talked about the layers and layers of professional learning, but we're going to be moving away from that and focus on, you know, student-teacher, student-student interactions. So I think you highlight that really well, Brian, so thank you.
No, that's a great point, I think that's a detail that will really, people will understand if that's in a letter that goes out to them.
Yeah, and I also want to add that when we think about where we are, we all hope we return like September to normalcy, right? Everybody back in because of vaccines, they're now beginning the testing of children with vaccines, so hopefully that's safe, and kids become vaccinated down the road, and our schools, and society becomes a safer place. This distance learning experience isn't something that's going to continue. We may look to explore the tools, the experience, to see how it can benefit learning down the road, but this is not going to be a scenario where someone is out for an extended period of time because they had to have surgery, that they're going to be able to dial into a class remotely. We're going to support students in traditional fashion in those fronts. Any greater change like that is a whole evolution of thinking and delivery of program that we're not prepared to do yet, right? We talked about emergency plans last spring, we talked about well-developed orchestrated plans now, but now, if there's any consideration moving forward, that's a separate conversation that we're not having now. We're transitioning right now, right? We were 100% remote last year, we were hybrid, and now we're moving back to being in person, and our hope is that we remain in that in-person environment moving forward.
Thank you. Maura?
Green light is good, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is all I have to do. Yeah, exactly, exactly. I mean, it's, it's fine if it works, we'll find out. Okay, so I'd like to echo the thanks that everyone, everyone has made to the administration and the teachers for everything that has been done to make this possible. But I just want to go straight to the questions as well. So I have a great, I have a great example from my own family, who has, who has been ill and had to be COVID-tested four times already during this year. So when he, when we fill out the screener and it's clear that he's staying home and being tested, it has taken no less than, I mean, generally it's taken about three days, right, to get the negative COVID test?
Yep.
And that will be the case for any child that wakes up with sniffles going forward. So those children will be out of school until the test comes back negative, or until they feel better. So I want to understand, I mean, you've made it clear, but what I've heard is that he will not be considered quarantining, quarantining during that time period. He's going to need to have a COVID test, and he can't come back to school, but he won't be able to come back to school in a day like he would if it was a minor, right, minor sniffles. Am I correct?
Yeah, that sounds accurate, yeah. So if you're displaying symptoms, right, that would be more so than usual by standard, right? And you know people, you know your child's body, you know how they are, and if they are COVID-like symptoms, and you have to answer the screener honestly, and that your child would stay at a school, you'd consult your medical professional, and they would give you that guidance, and you would have that communication with the nurse, of course, that it's possible that your child may be out of school for a couple days while they wait for a COVID test. At that point in time, when we think about the success of that model, it's going to become, if we're just saying that anyone that's out, you're going to go to that room, right, that virtual room, any kind of organized instruction is going to break down, it's going to become like a study hall. And we're not going to be able to support the continuity of instruction for those distance learners, and I have a commitment to those students as well. So what I'm outlining now does sound really rigid, and I hope no one takes offense to that, because I mean none, but what I am saying is that I want to deliver, I want my teachers to deliver the highest quality program they possibly can, and to have students coming in and out of it every day, we're not going to be able to do that. We get a month into this experience, maybe things look and feel different, maybe we're able to do something different, right? I've been very transparent, I believe, in acknowledging when we could do better. I've been pretty honest in saying, like, screwed that one up a little bit, right? This is what we're going to do now. But if we get a new idea, we see a new pathway, we're going to make adjustments, just like we have throughout this entire school year. So right now, we are taking that, that really rigid approach, but it is to protect the quality of the education that we're providing our kids. And just because your child may be out for a day or two doesn't mean that they're not going to be able to have access to Google Classroom. Work is still going to be posted for them to be able to do that work. Teachers aren't going to neglect them and ignore them, but we're not going to have that live stream opportunity in the secondary schools. And right now, we're saying that at the elementary level, we're not going to be able to pop in and out of the distance learning, one-room schoolhouse models that we've generated.
Teachers will give homework to the kids, and they will do the homework if they're well enough, right?
If you're, yep, if your child was out sick two years ago, it's going to be a similar experience to that.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome.
It just seemed like we hadn't quite hit that scenario exactly in the discussion, so.
There's probably 10 more that could come up that would relate to that, too.
I have, I have the next one, and you referred to this in your description of what the elementary experience would be like, but could I, could I make sure that I didn't miss you saying it, because I know that it isn't in one of the, in one of the bullets for parents who look later. But elementary school students, live class, live classes will be focused on ELA and math, I assume, and the specials will be during the?
It'll be independent time, yes.
The independent time.
Yes, the focus is going to be on core academics.
Core, thank you. Let's see, one, one question would also be whether, and this isn't obviously spelled out yet, and it's the kind of thing that's evolving, but outside of athletics, other So clubs and organizations that students are involved in would be moving toward in-person meetings?
That would be the expectation, yes. Yes, it would be the expectation that club experiences that have been meeting virtually will transition to in-person opportunities. One of the areas that we're looking for growth is thinking in and around the performing arts. There was actually a professional work group that had its first meeting yesterday, looking at exploring ways that we can, one, try to get some clarity on guidance and expectations from Department of Health, and reviewing research and studies related to what we can do here. So one of the things that's working in our favor, the weather's getting nicer, we can go outside and sing, we can go outside and play our instruments, right, when we, but there's real mixes in the studies that are out there right now about performing indoors, playing instruments, wind instruments indoors, even with like bell covers on the instruments. And we don't have bell covers for everything, so, and it would be a costly endeavor. But even with that, there's some real question marks in the studies that I reviewed on the subject. But we have a group that's come together, and we're working on that, and we're trying to come up with some solutions regionally that we can get the blessing on from Department of Health to expand the performance art, performing arts experiences for our students. I think vocal music and drama is going to be able to take that first step forward, for obvious reasons. I think that we can be socially distanced. We may not have the large ensembles, but maybe we can start to pilot with small ensembles, right? We could think about string ensembles. We could start to work in that direction, and hopefully some guidance will align to be able to help us there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jane?
Oh, yeah, my questions were answered, thank you. I have a few questions, and I will say, appreciate all the work that went into this from everyone involved, and then I'll dive in. A couple of things I just want to clarify, when we say that we're testing 5% of the district semi-monthly, that's going to be 5% per grade as well, so roughly six kids per grade every week will get tested, is that sort of what we're thinking right now? Or are we thinking we would cluster it by building?
Yeah, so we're going to do 5%, and we're going to try to have an equal representation, so think, right, your background's in accounting, so think of your mastery of an Excel sheet, right? So you think you're going to do your sorts, right? You're going to have a sheet for each school, tab for each school, and you're going to go through, and you're going to sort by grade, and you're going to support, and hit all that, and then you're going to do your randomization. And so you're going to want to have an equal representation. We're going to be testing, if we look at our numbers, we're going to be testing somewhere 85 to 90, so, a week is what my guess is, every two weeks. And so you're going to see approximately, right, a representation of students and staff that are going to be a cross-section of that particular school. So when, you know, you think of like Dowslane, you're going to have like, let's say, if we're testing staff, and I want to say, here's a whole nother area where there's lacking guidance, right? Are you texting, almost all of our staff are vaccinated, fully vaccinated, right? Do you test them, do you not? You could be, you could be vaccinated, but you could still get COVID, right? So, so the thinking is that you still test staff, but there, New York State has no guidance on the subject. I can tell you, you point to Pennsylvania, you point to New Jersey, you point to, I think Delaware, they have guidance on it, New York hasn't produced it yet. So the thinking is that you would still test staff that are interested, because you could have COVID, even though you've been vaccinated. So you'd be thinking like Dowslane, for example, you're going to be looking at, you know, roughly five students a grade, and then you're going to be looking at about five staff in the building. And over the course of these cycles, we're going to get close to hitting every student. Not everybody's name may be called, but it's going to be a rolling group that we're going to keep working towards each and every two weeks.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, because basically it comes down to one kid per class at the elementary level, if you think of it, okay. Thank you. And I was just, Chris, do we know how many, when we sent out that original survey about testing, how many kids opted in?
Yeah, we had, so, and I'm glad you brought it up, because the reason why I'm clarif, I'm going to administer another survey on this. I specifically, in my communications and in the survey that parents completed, it was for the cluster management strategy that the governor, the State Department of Health was putting in place. If you remember, yellow zone, orange zone, red zone, that magically disappeared at one point in time, right? So I specifically asked parents to respond for that reason. So now the survey that I've generated, that will go out with my communication, as I said, by Thursday, is going to be specifically for this, it's going to have information about this purpose in there. But the last time, we had about, I want to say about 1,200 people, 1,200 students out of the 17, you know, 24, whatever it is, that responded. So I'm hopeful we'll get a similar number, and whatever number responds, we're going to be able to do it. You know, speaking as a dad, I'd want my son to participate in it, because I want to have a sense if he's asymptomatic, right? And we would have no idea at home.
Yeah, we don't want to spread it to anybody else.
Absolutely.
I think that's the other big part of it. And that's additive to any athletic testing that's going on, just to be clear about that as well.
High-risk athletic testing will continue in concert with this, and it's possible students name could come up twice, I'm not going to pull him or her out. You know, our expectation as a leadership team was that high-risk athletics, you're going to participate in the ongoing screening, and Hannah Gross, our awesome athletic director, is leading that charge and handling that testing. So we're going to keep that going, but that's going to be a separate pool that they're drawing from than what I'm drawing from on the district level.
Okay. I'm just going to say, I know, as we were talking about the guidelines and Cuomo making the statement, that there's no need to quarantine anymore. Chris, I totally hear you, I think we don't want to reward, I guess, or incentivize people to go away. I am just concerned that if the kids can't come back because they're supposed to quarantine and they can't attend in any remote fashion, I don't, we don't want to encourage families not to be transparent about their travel plans, so I just think it's something we really need to think about. I don't know what the right answer is, and.
So I just want to come back to what I said very assertively earlier.
Okay.
We have, right, we're thinking spring break is when that's going to happen.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not exaggerating. Everybody call the governor's office three times tomorrow, and have every one of your friends and neighbors and the relatives that you're going to go see, with the person you rent in the beach house from, call the governor's office.
The only thing I personally would say to that is, like, I don't know that we should be driving science, like, if the DOH thinks we should quarantine, then, I don't, that's all I just wanted to say, that's my own personal opinion. I just want to clarify one other thing, if a student is required to quarantine because they've been exposed to someone, and they're at the higher, at the middle or upper school, will they be, if there's no streaming in a class, what's their option for attending remotely?
They will, that opportunity will be there.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
So if someone is under a school-issued quarantine, right, so the school-issued quarantine comes out before DOH, because we're the ones that are doing the legwork for Department of Health? Or if you're contacted by Department of Health because of some outside contact, you're going to, with that information, we're going to make those plans, and we're going to do that dance and all the scheduling logistics we talked about, and teachers are going to have to adapt in those cases. But that's, that's the kind of the exception to all of this.
At the elementary level, is there any trigger, I guess if a class or half a class winds up quarantined because they're going to be sitting closer together, is there a thought that that teacher will go into a hybrid mode? I just want to, because I'm trying to picture 10 kids suddenly jumping into the, this remote model, and.
Yeah, we'll consider those on a case-by-case basis, yeah.
Okay. And if a child does enter the remote world at, whether it's, I guess, elementary, at the elementary level, because it would only apply there, well, the classes might be at different points in lessons, so, and kids are at different points, so how is the teacher realistically going to be able to accommodate someone who's already done the work, someone who hasn't done the work, yet the remote class could be ahead of where their class is? How do we foresee that actually playing out?
As Mary indicated, there's going to be a tremendous amount of common planning and alignment and the instruction that's happening across the grade level. We have two wonderful instructional coaches at the elementary level that are We have two wonderful instructional coaches at the elementary level that are going to support those teachers that are handling, that are leading the remote learning to make adjustments in that alignment with instruction. So there's going, no doubt, just like in a classroom, there's going to have to be differentiation, right? A teacher's differentiating every day, because some child is breezing ahead in a particular assignment or grasps a concept, while another child or two needs some extra reteaching and support. It's going to be the same kind of thing, but they're going to be working on the same units of study, they're going to be completing similar activities. So it's not going to be apples and oranges, it may be gala and macintosh.
And I guess just one thing I think about open houses and teachers, and parents are able to go in at the elementary level and meet teachers and have a discussion with them, will there be an opportunity for parents to connect with the remote teachers prior to us going live to their children transitioning to a new class?
I think that's a great idea, Mrs. Bernstein.
I'm just asking. And that's it, those are my only questions. Thanks.
Thank you. So I have less of a question, I guess more of a comment slash request. Obviously, these plans, you know, are going to adjust our budget planning and the work that we've already started, and what we're planning to do next year now is getting done this year and so forth. So I think if we can, you know, start to look at the budgetary impacts of this, both for this year and how it's going to change, you know, what we're looking at for next year, that'd be helpful, as you know, we're in, I was in the middle of our budget process, you know, so...
So, yeah, so at our next Tuesday is my proposed budget. So we've made adjustments based upon this. Carol and our fantastic treasurer, Evan Gross, who's on the call, have been analyzing our current financial standing to see what opportunities may be available to make some purchases now. Based upon our plan that we've developed for surveillance testing, we know we're going to be able to bring down that number for next year. We're hoping to make, you know, to be able to make a couple purchases now, and then we're purchasing the barriers now, which was a budgetary figure. So right there, we're talking about a deficit of $400,000 when we spoke last week, right? That just the barriers and the surveillance testing savings, we've just recouped a quarter of those monies. So we're going to make other adjustments, and think about the structure by which I presented, and Carol and I presented the budget last year, right? We did so in a tiered manner. We're expecting that there's going to be other stimulus funds that are going to come to the school district over the next two years. Our representatives are now working on numbers, and I saw a figure that was then retracted shortly thereafter of $1.2 million coming to Irvington. Our hope and our advocacy needs to be that that does not supplant state funding like the initial round of stimulus money did. And that money should come in to try to make school districts whole and to reinvest in those facilities, projects, and other purchases that are being put on hold now. But what we're going to do, we're going to present a balanced budget next week. That budget's going to make some adjustments over what we've done in the past, and should we have those additional revenues, we are going to prioritize those initiatives that we'll invest in as a district.
Thank you.
I would just say, if people are calling the governor tomorrow about the travel quarantines, they should also ask that federal aid supplement not supplant school aid.
Yeah, yeah. Keep it short and simple, their bandwidth is...
Quick, I had one more question. I'm sorry. It was just, it's, as spring approaches, thankfully, and we start to get to warmer weather, and we are opening up schools, I had a question about fields and field usage for non-school folks, you know, some different programs, you know, like lacrosse or soccer, or, you know, even with the rec. Like, so are we going to open the fields to community use, and do we have a deadline for that? I know Linda's probably feeling a lot of...
This is an agenda item with our Buildings and Grounds Committee on Friday.
Yeah, yeah.
We had a discussion, and we will be reaching out to those that submitted an application. I think actually my assistant, Doreen, is in the process of doing that right now. So we had about three or four requests, and we're just, you know, making sure that there's no, that we're managing our athletic program first. Once we have that field used, we'll then provide, I think there's been requests for lacrosse and soccer to use the fields, and we'll allow that. We are going to ask them to follow Section 1 rules with spectators and spacing and all that, that kind of thing, so...
So it won't jeopardize any particular...
We want to, you know what, where we don't have governance over them, but we want our kids active, and if it's safe to do it, and DOH has said that they, those sports can resume, you know, we have standards that we've set for our own students, if you're going to use our facilities, my expectation is that you're going to need to meet those standards, and you're going to need to have those safeguards, whether it's spectators, whether it's social distancing, mask-wearing, those are the things that we want to see.
Super. Like I said, it'd be good to get the kids moving again.
No doubt.
For sure. Thanks a lot.
And speaking of spring, you know, will teachers, maybe more than normal, look to try to bring classes outside where possible to work outside and take advantage of the nice weather?
Yeah, so I would say, so some of the things like we talk about here, when we think elementary, it's going to be much more viable because of the one-room schoolhouse model. When we think of secondary, it's going to be harder because we don't have that degree of connectivity outside of the building. So I do have that tickler list on my desk, and outside Wi-Fi, we have the quotes there, that's all there. But like anything, even if we could find the money, or we were to, someone was to gift us or make a donation that would support that, there's still a turnaround in being able to acquire the equipment and install it. So while we have plans ready to roll, at the secondary, there's going to be limitations to likely periods when teachers don't have remote students.
No, I understood, that's an important distinction, you know, for classes that are, where every student is there, because obviously you don't want to disadvantage someone who is remote but not being able to participate.
Agreed.
So with that...
I had one more question as well.
Go ahead.
Thank you. In your great explanations for all of our questions and your presentation, one more question pops up, which is, you explained that vaccination status is verified by the Department of Health for, if there's an exposure. Are there any other circumstances in which the district honors a vaccination? Like, you're hearing, you're aware that teachers have been vaccinated, but do you have, you know, there's, that's, there's not, like, is that like a sort of a... For teachers, is there an understanding of who is vaccinated? And similarly, can students also find a way to verify for the district that they are vaccinated? Or is it only through exposure?
It's a difficult question to answer. So the vaccination decisions and whether someone is vaccinated or not, in many ways, is a HIPAA requirement. So we'll, you know, so we have to protect someone's health information. If you remember, and we're doing a lot of talking about Cuomo tonight, but Cuomo issued an executive order that required teachers to report their vaccine status to their respective schools or their districts. That was a little short-sighted, when one put the burden on schools to collect it, but it only looked at teachers, it didn't look at support staff, it didn't look at administrators. Like, you know, I could be in every classroom as your superintendent, and no one would have to know that I was fully vaccinated. So then, after a lot of pushback, he walked it back and modified it. And now what is happening, we're in the midst of a system where the county has to collect and report that information, but realistically, you know, who's collecting the data? So Mary and Lisa in the district office are collecting that information, and we're going to provide that data to the county, but it's numbers, it's not necessarily names. So we're able to share those percentages, and I presume that is going to be then published on the, you know, COVID report card concept dashboard. But when we're thinking about making that information public, or...
It's not really the public, it's about, operationally, with the, is there only a legitimate use for vaccination status around direct exposure? And the assumption is, the understanding is that generally, the vast majority of teachers and staff and administrators are vaccinated, but you're not, there's no actual, you know, verification or operational use, other than if there's a direct exposure.
Direct exposure and the current travel-related quarantine.
Right, well, I guess that's what I'm getting at, is that, is there, if a teacher travels or a student travels, and they don't want to quarantine because they're vaccinated, they can't say to you...
They can't, they can't, well, they would inform us that they are fully vaccinated. We would then have that information vetted by the Department of Health, and if, in fact, that information is accurate, the Department of Health will release them from the quarantine.
Just put a button on it, if someone, a teacher, a staff member, or a student is traveling, if they provide information to you that they're fully vaccinated, say in a letter to the nurse, that would be vetted with the Department of Health.
That would be consistent with the travel-related quarantine guidelines, that a person that is fully vaccinated at least two weeks out from their second dose or last dose, and not further than 90 days away from that two-week window, those individuals would not have to quarantine.
And that's also true of people who had COVID in the last 90 days.
Correct.
Thank you.
So to clarify for those of us who are trying to keep up with Michael, what that means is, children who are under the age of vaccination, those comments don't apply to you.
Don't apply, no.
Thank you. So at this point, we have our community comment portion. So if you would like to make a comment or question, please put your name and address in the Q&amp;A feature in Zoom, and you'll be recognized. As a reminder, please keep your comments two, three minutes or less. You can also always provide written comments or questions to the board at our email address, which is board@irvingtonschools.org, and you will get a response to those questions. So first, we have Amy Chen, 160 field point in Irvington. Jay, are you able to find Ms. Chen?
She's here, but she's not able to speak. If you can unmute, please.
So we'll move on, and we'll see if we can come back and fix that technical issue. Next, we have in a Kapulovich, 372 Birch Lane, Irvington, New York, 10533. And again, my standard disclaimer, I will apologize for anyone whose name I mispronounce.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, yes, thank you, everyone, for all the work that this took. We really appreciate all of the, everything that it took to get here. My question is that these changes, especially what was just announced in detail for post-travel quarantine, these changes are coming very late for families that have already booked and paid for travel plans with extended family. Can you, can you just comment on what families should do in those situations where they've made arrangements because they were planning in one way and now have to adjust?
My recommendation would be reach out specifically to your school principal and nurse, just to be transparent about your plans, and we'll see how that would affect with, you know, testing and travel, assuming the Department of Health guidelines do not change. But have the communication locally, and that communication will then, of course, filter up to my office. And I just want to say, remind folks that, and this isn't directed directly to you, and that it's a lot easier if you focus your communications at the building level, so I don't have to bring it back down and then back up to me. So please reach out to them and have the conversations, and if there's reason for them to check back in with me, we will do that.
Thank you, I think Ms. Chen is back, so Jay, if you could recognize her, please.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi, sorry about the technical difficulties earlier. Thank you very much, I do have a few questions. So first, for the all-remote, so it's basically half-day synchronous, half-day asynchronous. So right now, in Dallas Lane, grade two and three, for example, my kids are logged on 8:220. So I guess now they'll only be logged on 8:1040, that's half the time. And then, I'm, I think, I'm not sure if you said this, but all academics, no art, no PLTW, no gym, no music, so they'll be missing out all of that as well. That's part one. Part two, the certified substitutes, are they trained also in remote specifically? So that they could, you know, they know the technology and they can more engage properly. And then also, right now, you know, the substitute kids' ratio look okay, but potentially, when is it, you know, too many for them to handle? And I think, and I'm not entirely sure, but it seems like if kids go hybrid, that's separate from the 100% remote, right? So it's not like all of a sudden, like you said, the one-room classroom becomes, you know, 20 kids in there instead of just the remote kids. So, and then separately, you mentioned...
Ms. Chen, can we, can we maybe pause?
Yes, of course.
You only have like three minutes, and you've raised some questions that we'd like to be able to speak to, but we're going to lose track of them all at some point. So when we say about kids that are going hybrid, we aren't going to have anyone that's going hybrid. So you're either going to be in-person, or you're going to be in the distance program. When we think about if we do have a number of kids that have to quarantine for any particular reason, and those numbers in that distance-learning classroom get to a place where they start to exceed what would be our traditional Irvington classrooms, we'll have to make modifications to the experience and potentially engage other teachers to support it. But Mary, do you want to speak to the initial questions that Ms. Chen asked about teacher preparation and the hybrid?
Sure.
Or distance learning?
So Ms. Chen, you're accurate in the children, the expectation is that the children will be logged on to the Google Meet for half the day. The other half of the day is asynchronous. I can't tell you that in that other half of the day, there won't be any computer-based learning. There may be some, but it will not be with the teacher, and we're looking to ensure that during that asynchronous time, it is not all on computer, that there's as little as we can while still maintaining the quality of instruction. The time that students are with their teacher, that half-day that they're receiving live instruction with the teacher, will be core academics. All of the specials will be occurring during the asynchronous part of the day.
And are there, are the substitutes trained specifically in remote and in the technology and engagement probably?
Thank you. So the long-term substitutes who will be placed in these positions have already been working in our buildings, so they are already familiar with the technology of using Google Meet.
And Dr. Harrison mentioned earlier, when the remote room gets too big, based on normal standards, I mean, normal classroom is 20 kids, I mean, that's way too big for a remote classroom. Even 10 for a remote is probably already huge, if you're considering that. I mean, I think, you know, more thought needs to be given there.
So if you looked at our numbers in terms of placing only two grades with one teacher, it's a very, very small number, well under 10 at the elementary level. And if we find, for reasons of quarantine, that those groups get very large, we will immediately address that.
And then separately, it was mentioned earlier, you know, the county will be collecting the vaccine rates, so I guess we won't be able to get any indication right now, is the vaccine rate, you know, for teachers 10%, 30%?
I would say that when we look at the vaccination level... I, I would say that when we look at the vaccination levels and the knowledge that I have from our staff, I would say the vast majority of there, I would say there's few individuals that are not going to be fully vaccinated.
That's just teachers though, right? Like you said, not staff.
No, that is all staff. The opportunity, we bent over backwards and I would tell you, if you work in the Irvington schools, you've had more opportunities to get vaccinated probably than anybody else in the state of New York.
Okay.
So all, all the opportunities out there. Our staff's in good shape. That they, every opportunity to get vaccinated has been handed to our staff. And we've accommodated them to make sure they can be vaccinated, to protect their, their health and to ensure that they're going to be available to teach for our children.
And I would, just one last comment would be, you know, could the synchronous learning part have been longer? Or, you know, because just in terms of the hours that they're spending in, in any class synchronous or asynchronous, it's probably going to be because they're really short, right? I mean, my second and third grader, like I said, was pretty much, you know, whether they're engaged or not, or at least they're logged on eight to 2:20 and now it's most likely that, you know, it is cut in half and the other half could be, have to fill with something else.
Yeah, I would say this is the opportunity, the model that we're introducing in Irvington. One that I think serves our students well. Otherwise it would not have been that level of synchronous instruction. When we look at one or two children in a grade level in the elementary school, it would have been that, that experience where a child was learning alone a lot of the day, watching the, the camera, watching the computer all day. So this is an opportunity for that direct instruction. And I think students are going to get more direct instruction and more support in this model than you would see in any other school that is not providing this level of, of instruction. You know, some bigger districts, I'll tell you, have remote-only classes. And, and to say that 20 students in a remote class is too much, I, I don't agree with you. Because you're delivering instruction in one mode, a teacher can be a very, very effective in that way. But larger districts may have 20 kids on a grade level where they, that are going to be participating remotely. Because of their numbers, they've reorganized classes and they'll have one teacher that tends to those particular students. That is not our reality in Irvington. So I think this is a nice step in between them right now.
Right. Yeah. I mean, I think 20 kids, 20 high school kids probably work, 20 kindergarteners remote probably doesn't. But yeah, I, I mean, I understand your point. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Ilanit Aguirre, 186 South Buckout Street in Irvington.
Hello?
No, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody for all the hard work that you do. I have three hopefully quick questions. One, I think it was in slide five, you had mentioned that the masks will be mandatory except for when eating. But is under my, from what I heard, the kids at Dowsling last week were being trained how to eat with their mask on, where they would keep their mask on during lunch and then pull down their mask, take a bite, pull the mask back up, chew and, you know, repeat over and over until their lunch is done. I was very concerned when I heard that because how would somebody know if the kid was choking if they have a mask on while they're chewing their lunch? So I just wanted to know if your slide.
That is not going to be, that is not going to be, I'm sorry to cut you off. That's not a practice that, that, that we are going to be implementing in the schools. When our students are eating, whether that is in the cafeteria or outside or in a large space, when masks, break time is provided, students will not have their masks on so they can enjoy their meal. We have to have some normal here. The, yes, that, yes, that's all I'll say. With that, that, that experience is not going to be polite.
Okay, but that, that did occur the last speech, just so you know that they were taught to do that. The other question that I have is on one of your slides, you also had mentioned that the tents were ordered. And when it came to the dining for the different schools, there were a lot of different options for all the schools, but Dowsling didn't have a tent option under dining. It just said cafeteria and gym. Are the, is it, is there no plans for the Dowsling kids to eat outside under a tent?
I'm going to be honest, not initially. And we talked about it. The concern that we had was our elementary students taking their lunch from the cafeteria and making it outside to the tented area without the meal ending up on the ground.
Right.
So it was, it was a practical thing. Not to say, like I said, you know, our plans are going to continue to evolve. We're going to reflect on our experience if opportunities present. We're not going to shy away from it. There may be chances where kids will be elite outside at Dowsling. In our initial plan of phasing into this, we're not going to provide that opportunity because we're not going to have the staffing. We don't want to have students upset if they, if they drop their lunch. So we're going to manage it very closely. And by doing so, we're looking at like the contact tracing. We have all assigned seats established in either the gymnasium or the cafeteria. So we know where every student is going to be seated for every single lunch period. So we will always be able to manage the contact tracing. Once we move outside at the elementary level, that'll become harder. So we got to take it one step at a time. So maybe we'll get there. But right now, I don't want ants eating your child's lunch right now.
Thank you. And one other question, if I still have time, is, you know, this kind of just piggybacking off what one of the ladies spoke on the board about, you know, the, the child getting like a sniffle. And then as a responsible parent, you don't want the kid going to school, even though you kind of assume and hope that it's not COVID and there's no risk of exposure that you are aware of. So, you know, what she had mentioned, like you have to stay home for four days waiting for a COVID test and not being able to get, you know, learning time, not being able to log in remotely. For instance, like this happened to me last week. My daughter has allergies. I didn't want her to send her to school because her nose was pouring out. And, you know, we were home for four days, remote learning, waiting for her COVID tests to get back. And, you know, it was negative, but especially now it's spring coming and allergy season coming. You know, do we just say like, oh, go to school. It's just allergies or do we get stuck at home for four days without even being able to log in remotely?
You have to, you're going to have to err on the side of caution. You're going to have to work with your medical care provider. And the doctors understand that if your child is being treated for allergies, there's a whole level of thinking and science behind the measurement of the symptoms and symptoms that are different or not typical for that which someone would normally experience. So if I suffer from, for, for years, if I suffered from migraines and all of a sudden I start to have that feeling that the headache is coming on, well, I'm under medical care. I call my doctor, tell him or her what is happening. They would say, Chris, that's your normal course of business. This is, this is within your, your, your makeup of how your body responds when you have a migraine coming on. And they will guide you through that process. They will collaborate with our nurses. Essentially what it is, is that in those cases that we accept what is referred to as an alternate diagnosis from your doctor. So your doctor can verify that and put that in writing to our nurse. That will be reviewed with our school physician, our medical director, and your child may be able to return to school earlier.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. So seeing no more questions, I'll remind everyone that our next meeting is next Tuesday, the 23rd at 7:30 here and via Zoom. And with that is their motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
If I can ask a question, I just want to ask the question. So team, are we all on board? There's no, no vote.
There's no vote.
If you want to do it for formality, you can. There's not a need, but like, I feel like we celebrate a little bit. Are we on board?
I, I, I think you could tell by the questions where we're at, you would have had much different questions if the board as a whole was not supportive and, you know, excited to hopefully move to this next phase where we welcome our students, you know, back full time.
To the board, I thank you for your, your continued support through all this, to the parent community. I want to thank you for the support and for your trust. And to all of our teachers, our staff, we couldn't be here without you. You've been the best. I am proud of, of, of your work and so proud of your partnership and everything that you've done for our students. So to every staff member, to our union leadership, to the IFA, you've been fantastic. So thank you for all that you do for our students every day.
To our custodial crew, to our, my business office team who's been doing all this purchasing, I just want to say thank you as well.
It's like the Oscars. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, that's make or break. So, but hopefully we'll be reporting tomorrow in my Facebook Live that they're, they're here.
Yes. So, yes, again, you know, to reiterate the thanks that we've, you said at the beginning, at the end, you know, again, Dr. Harrison, thank you to you and the rest of the central office staff and everyone for leading us through this process and for the presentation tonight and the work that you and everyone else has been doing over the course of this year to, you know, slowly get us, you know, to this place. So, you know, looking forward to seeing everyone back in school and for the ability to increase student experience as the year goes on. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Sorry, so moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.
Have a good night, everybody.